Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I'd like to call to order the July 19th, 2022 City Council meeting. Please call the roll.
Garza?
Here.
Bass?
Here.
Bagwell?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Iris Dickarala?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this morning's prayer will be given by City Attorney Paul Brown. Paul?
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We are so grateful that you provide for our needs. You have done so in abundance. Lord, we pray for our leaders. Pray for our leaders at the national level, at the state level, and we pray for wisdom for our city council. So, Lord, as they seek to lead, please guide them. Lord, we especially pray for city staff in this heat wave. Pray for their safety. We pray for citizens who may not have access to proper air conditioning. So, we pray for their safety as well. Lord, thank you. Thank you for sending your son. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next item, please.
Item four, oral communications from the audience.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting where those in the audience could address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Please state your name and zip code and let your comments to five minutes.
Hello, Jeff Schenk with the Engineering Department. Got a quick handout.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we currently have the 11th Avenue Reconstruction Project going on down in the west. And it's going on between the Harsha Canal and Main Street. Right now, we have from the Harsha Canal to Forest Street closed. During the construction of this phase, the contractor hit a water service line. Repairing it revealed that the existing main was going to be too shallow. After the new pavement was going to be on, it was going to be approximately 20 inches from the top of pavement, which is well within the frost line. We have immediately begun to design a water main relocation. And the intent is to be able to complete the realignment of this new water line while still getting the main main line of 11th Avenue open, because I know the project's already been delayed a little while with different obstacles, weather and some water line lowerings. And now we have to do a relocation. So, we're trying to keep the the phase on time, or well, it's new adjusted on time, and move to the second phase while still completing the water main in the first phase. Just want to let you know it's coming up. This is not going to require council meeting. I don't believe that the change order is going to be over that 10% that you're allowed to within the project. But I wanted to let you know that it is something that happened. It's happening.
Yeah, appreciate you making us aware of it. Am I misremembering that we've had some other concerns with contracts through Vauxhall recently?
No, it was just this one.
Okay.
We had just had a part of the delay on this phase, and we had had some communications. And then we'd had a little breakdown in emailing. There was a little glitch, I guess, where we weren't allowed to receive their emails weren't coming through. And so, there was a communication breakdown for a period of time.
Okay.
I think we're all back on track now.
Do you have a?
Mayor, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Be sure everyone pulled a microphone to you so you can be heard. Because folks right here can't even hear.
Okay.
And I'm having trouble hearing.
Okay.
Much closer to you.
Do you have an ETA on this?
Not yet. We're still trying to get a subconsultant or a subcontractor onboard to do the relocation. They've contacted M&amp;D to come in and get a price. And so, we're just waiting for the price to make sure it's within what we would find to be an average range of costs, plus a little bit, because I don't, we don't have a water line since this inflation rates have went crazy. So, I'm not 100% sure exactly where it's going to come in, but yes.
Yeah, well, just keep us posted.
I'll do.
Real quick, Jeff, I got a question for you. I don't mean harsh on you, but don't we have paperwork showing there was a water line there or some kind of?
Yes, yeah, we do have the paperwork. I mean, we have the GIS and we've done, we went and went and pulled all the old records to try and figure out, because we potholed in multiple locations to verify the depth of the water main and make sure it was going to be below the street. We measured down to the nut on the top of the water valve, just, you know, and took some different measurements around. But for some reason there, just once between forest and orchard, the pipe comes up. I mean, it's 1922, it was hand dug, so I don't know.
So, it was higher than you perceived it to be?
Yes, we didn't have anything in that block, so.
So, they did know it was there, but it came up higher?
Yes.
I got you. Okay.
We probably can't go back on the contractor from 1922.
Okay.
Okay, other comments for Jeff? No? Okay.
Good morning, Rebecca Starkey Kiesling, Director of Republican Information and Community Engagement. I just wanted to come up and talk to you really quick about the sesquicentennial celebration coming up. You each should have received a little lapel pin on your desk. We have committee working hard to plan a mile-long block party. I'm sure you guys have been hearing about. So, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. But also, we're going to have a city celebration. I don't know if you've noticed outside City Hall, there is a marker for a time capsule that is due to be opened on August 15th, which would be our 150th celebration, 150th birthday. So, we will be opening that time capsule on August 15th. At this point, we're planning on 10:00 AM. We're still working out all the details, but there will be a bit of a ceremony and celebration. And we will plan to bury another time capsule to mark for them to open in the bicentennial. So, we're excited about that.
How old is it?
It's 50 years old. So, 50? So, it was buried in 1972 during the centennial.
Okay.
And some of the things included, I forgot to bring the newspaper clipping, but it did include some letters to future council members, so you guys.
Oh, that's so exciting.
There will be some fun stuff there. And if you want to get started on your letters to those for the bicentennial, that'd be fun.
It depends what's in those letters to the city.
That is true. We will not be reading them openly, probably, but they will be available for public consumption in some way.
All right.
Well, thanks for your work on that. I'm really excited about it.
It's going to be a lot of fun.
Part of history, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, are there others in the audience who'd like to address the council?
Mayor, City Council Members, Tony Finley, Executive Director of Hutchinson Recreation Commission. Just wanted to provide a quick update on the remaining four weeks of Salt City Splash operations. If you remember when we opened, we were preparing to open, I addressed concerns about our lifeguard staffing in regards to numbers. Fortunately, we have been able to make it through to this time without any closures of the pool. We were having to close certain features in the pool at certain times because of lifeguard shortages, but we would never have to close the entire facility. But looking through the next four weeks here, this is the time of year traditionally where we start to lose lifeguards, unplanned vacations, those sorts of things. And so, we are going to close the next three Mondays. So, the final three Mondays of the season, so that'd be July 25th, August 1st, and August 8th, we will close, we will not be open those days. This will provide rest for the staff that we do have. As you know, it's very hot out there, and we're working them six to eight days in a row at this time. And so, for the safety of our lifeguards and the safety of our patrons, we feel that that will be important to do. So, the last weekday of the splash operation will be August 12th. We will be open the weekends of August 13th and 14th, and August 20th and 21st. Dog's Day at the Splash will be Monday, August 22nd. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Well, thanks for making do with what you had, Tony. What are, what kind of marketing efforts are being done to make the public aware of the closures?
So, that will start today. The recommission met yesterday and received this approval. Wanted to come and let you guys know today before we made a public announcement. So, if there was no objections, we'll start the full news release, social media. We'll put signage at the facility to let everybody know.
Hey, Tony, how'd the 13U go this weekend?
Went great, yeah. Yeah, no, hot. But yeah, we hosted the Hap Dumont 13U State Tournament this weekend at Fun Valley. We've hosted that state tournament the last five, six years, I believe. And 22 teams qualified to make it to the state tournament. So, it was, it was a great weekend. Thanks for asking. All right, thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Are there others in the audience who'd like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, please call the next item.
Item five, consent agenda.
Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Dickarala?
Yes, next item, please.
Mr. Brown, are we moving item 7A again?
Yes, Mayor, we'd ask that item 7A be advanced. Really, the council needs to consider the City Council Policy Number 17. If it's not approved by the council, then these resolutions are really unnecessary. So, we'd ask the council to hear item 7A first.
Great.
Item 7A, consider amendments to City Council Policy Number 17. Appointment procedure for citizen boards and commissions.
Good morning, council. Dave Sotell, Human Relations Officer. In front of you, you have some recommendations to the City Council Policy Number 17, Appalling Procedure for Citizen Boards and Commissions. The purpose of this policy is to provide the citizens of Hutchinson every opportunity to participate in city government by establishing an application bank of persons interested in serving on the city's boards and commissions, and to establish procedures for making application for appointment and fulfilling positions to city boards and commissions. And May of 2022, the City of Hutchinson City Council asks for city staff to review the city's policies regarding appointments to citizen boards and commissions. It is in the interest of the city council to increase representation of those who have historically been underrepresented in city boards and commissions. The following recommendations came from feedback from staff members, community leaders, and the Hutchinson Human Relations Commission. The goal is to strengthen the City Council Policy Number 17 and increase representation of the diversity within the city of Hutchinson. So, the recommendations are in front of you. City staff shall create a recruitment campaign three months prior to the expiration for all city boards and commissions. Campaigns shall include multi-channel outreach. City staff shall seek collaboration from, but not limited to, community organizations, Chamber of Commerce, membership groups, clubs, and religious organizations to recruit applicants for the city boards and commissions. We're also recommending that individuals are allowed to serve only on one city board or commission. Currently, the application and accompanying information remains active for three years. We're recommending changing that to just one year. Then, we're also recommending that city staff shall attempt to create and collect a demographic survey of those who are serving on boards and commissions. And then, city staff, myself, or whoever the Human Relations Officer is, shall present that demographic data for you once a year to give you an overall picture of what our city boards and commissions look like. And the last item there is to encourage citizens to consider participating in boards and commissions appointed by the governing body, shall be published on the city's website with their respective appointment dates and expirations, which we're already currently doing without this policy. But that's one more item that we are adding to that. Happy to answer any questions.
Why is the recommendation support to go down to one year?
Go down to?
The, so, the application currently stays in the process three years. And the experience of city liaisons for boards and commissions is that we'll go through that bank when we have opening spots, and we'll call individuals who are on that bank of applicants. And usually, they're either not interested in serving anymore, or they've moved, that was my experience, they've moved from town, they're no longer living in our community, or just within city limits. And so, it was just more of a challenge of keeping that data and going through all those applications with little success of having a response. So, it was sort of a loss of time for city staff to go through those applications that we've get for three years. So, makes it easier on us to just have.
So, you just keep the applications for one year?
Correct, yeah.
Well, because the application window, I guess, is only done at the end of the year. I mean, it may make sense. I think it's a great question, Sarah. How's the rest of the council feel if three years is too long? Is one year too short?
I think that if you have a person who wants to stay on it, and you don't have nobody else to fill that position, they still have a chance to stay on it another year. Am I right, correct?
On the application bank?
Yes.
So, the application bank is folks who have shown interest in being in a board or commission. They apply, and we're only going to keep that for one year. They're welcome to reapply again. We're not banning them from applying again. It just makes it easier on us. If folks are interested, then they'll apply again. Whereas currently, last time I went through those applications, I had 20 of them, and zero of them were interested in serving in the Human Relations Commission. And that happens throughout our other boards and commissions.
What page on the agenda is this?
Is page?
I think I zoomed past.
126.
Yeah, 126. I've got a question on the demographic collection information. It's, 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 and the attempt to collect demographic, demographic data is after they've been appointed to a board.
That's correct.
Not prior. So, no one's going to feel like if I, if I don't provide it, I may not get chosen.
Yeah.
The other thing, I want to make sure if we move forward with this, that anyone providing demographic data, they're going to know very, very plainly that it will be made public.
Correct. It won't be made public each individual's demographic data. The attempt is to collect that data and then just give you a picture of what our boards and commissions look like.
I think, to be fair, that it should be made very plain if they're, hey, we're asking for demographic data. Here's the questions we'd like answers to. This will be provided. It'll be anonymous as far as the name associated with demographic data. I just want to make sure they know upfront.
Correct, okay. And they're not required to fill out that survey, by the way.
And it's still up to the mayor to appoint, to look at the list and appoint.
That's correct.
Who they want.
So, sorry, I'm back to the three-year, one-year thing. So, does it typically stay there three years? Because that's the term of the, like, let's say they're not selected. And then, is there a new person? I guess, what is the timing of the turnover on these boards and commissions? Is it set so that there's a new person that comes in every year at the end of a term? Because I'm just saying if somebody applies, and then they're thrown out within a year because they didn't have the opportunity to be seated, I'm just wondering about the timing. Is two years better? Is there more of a turnover every two years?
Paul, how long are the terms on boards and commissions usually? I don't think they're consistent, are they?
Well, they're staggered, so you usually have openings each year.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay, well, how the staggering, when is it every two years? Because like, the council's every two years.
Right.
Three new people coming in.
They're staggered on purpose. Otherwise, say it's the planning commission, you lose your whole planning commission in one shot, in one year. And you need that carryover experience.
So, yes, my question was, is it one year or two years? How's it staggered on most of these?
One year.
Is it one year?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my question on the timing on there. If they had, if they did have it in there, would they have the ability to be seated before their information got thrown out? Okay. I have one more question. So, the city staff will create a recruitment campaign three months prior to the term of expiration for all city boards and commissions. Isn't that staggered out through the year, too? Is there any way that we can have it where it's, we appoint bi-yearly to these?
That's sort of the change that we're making. Paul will have a resolution here in a second where all the appointments to boards and commissions are the ones that are filed under city jurisdiction. They will be on the same date. So, that's December 31st?
January 1.
January 1. That would be the appointment.
January 1.
And so, that makes it, that's sort of, we think, will be the most beneficial in our and to make sure that we're getting out there and recruiting, because currently, those end dates are all over the map. And so, it's hard on city staff to just have recruitment campaigns constantly. What we're hoping is that in the fall, we'll say, we'll have 20 appointment opens, 20 openings on boards and commissions at the end of the year. I don't think it'll be that high. And then, recruit applicants for that. And makes it easier for us to have a campaign on that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, I really appreciate your work on this. I know it's been a quick turnaround to get everybody on the same page. And this question's probably more appropriate for the other resolution, but backfilling positions that are currently opened. Will we do that throughout the year? If somebody falls off or, because like, well, for instance, right now, I know planning commission is pretty understaffed, so.
Right, yeah, we can appoint, if there's an open position, somebody leaves, the commission just not interested in serving, we'll still do the regular appointment process. This is just for the ones that end on their appropriate ending time, which the planning commission has, I think, two, three open spots, two open spots. And so, we can appoint them at any time.
Okay.
If that happens throughout the year, we're not changing that process.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And really, was the work of city staff to try to come up with some ideas and how to do this. And all the department heads and city liaisons to the boards had some great ideas and talked about just the challenge of seeking diversity and limited staff time and limited resources. And Linda and Paul worked great in trying to figure out all the appointment dates and the ending of those terms. So, really appreciate their efforts, too.
Yeah.
On the current application, what information is requested when someone applies?
That's a great question.
Well, you've applied for two.
It's been?
A minute?
A minute, yes.
Rebecca has that, or Linda has that.
It's very basic information that's requested. Essentially, it's name, address, do you own a home, are you current on taxes? Do you currently serve on any boards or commissions? What's your background?
And I would encourage it to be somewhat vague, so there's no picking and choosing too much. It's just.
And it's interesting, some other cities do ask more demographic questions on their applications, but we think this will be sufficient in not scaring off anyone from applying.
Right. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Well, Dave, I think it's great. You and the staff did a great job.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on 7A or further discussion?
Motion to approve amendments to the Hutchinson City Council Policy Number 17, Appointment Procedure for Citizen Boards and Commissions.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in second, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Dickarala?
Yes, and let's go back to 6A.
Item 6A, consider resolution to provide for conformity within city boards and commissions.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You've already heard a lot of this. Not much to add with this particular. Not much to add with this particular resolution. It just takes all the terms and has them start January 1 and end December 31. And so if they, if their term terminates prior to that date, it's extended to December 31 of their last year. So that will give our city staff an opportunity to have their campaign, to seek additional candidates to serve on boards and commissions. And in the future, then it's just going to go on a calendar year basis. Some things we don't have the authority to change because the city appoints folks, but it's controlled by state law. And, and some of these aren't really our commissions and boards. Community Corrections Advisory Board, Hutchinson Recreation Commission, Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, and the Hutchinson Library Board are all by state statute and, and not really just a city-created board or commission. The rest are. And we provided this resolution to be consistent with the new city policy to allow that to happen. And probably the only other thing there that's of any significance is the maximum service time, which is one partial term and two consecutive full terms. And yes, this still allows appointments during the year. And we have some of those, and we'll be doing those right away as soon as these are approved.
I guess I should say one more thing about the council policy. There's something in there that says we're limiting folks to serve in only one board or commission. I want to clarify that if somebody's already serving in more than one, they can finish out their term. And then in the future, for appointment, they can still only serve in one board or commission.
Are there questions, comments, or a motion on this item?
Well, as I was telling you earlier, it's amazing how quickly this got done. I appreciate, somebody's obviously working hard to work through these issues. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to provide for conformity within city boards and commissions and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Farmers Dickard Haller?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 6B, consider resolution dissolving the Arts and Humanities Council.
This one is a little different because we're getting, we're eliminating a council altogether. But let's talk about currently what's, what's going on. Currently, we have a contract with the Hutchinson Recreation Commission to conduct these activities for the, the Arts and Humanities Council. I was approached by Tony Finley about the future need for this. We have a contract that pays the Hutch Recreation Commission about $33.5 a year to take care of those activities. And I do want to mention something that it isn't, to be clear, so that no one is confused and makes a complaint later or has a worry. We have specific grants from the city that are in our city budget. Those will not change. And here they are. Emancipation Day Committee, Family Community Theater, Municipal Band, Hutch Symphony, Reno Coral Society, and Stage 9. Those are in the city's budget, they will remain in the city's budget. The city will remain paying those grants, okay? So this resolution is not about any of those things. It is just about the activities that the Hutchinson Recreation Commission currently performs. The Hutchinson Recreation Commission is willing to take this on and include it in their budget. So we will not have this cost. And, and so we won't have a contract with them any longer. It will extend till the end of this year. So the effective date of this resolution is the end of 2022. Because that item is still being budgeted and still being paid to the Hutchinson Recreation Committee, Commission. And think about, you know, Third Thursday, Southwest Brick Town activities. These are all things that the Hutchinson Recreation Commission has been performing pursuant to their contract. And it's a, it's a wide range of activities. But they're going to assume that in their budget. And the actual Arts and Humanities Council has voted to disband the council. And so there's no reason to have it further. And that's why this resolution is presented to you.
So Paul, will the Hutch Rec commissioners make the allocation to the different cultural activities?
Yes, they'll perform all those functions.
Okay. I guess I'm a little, I do have some concern that we're going to be carrying on the same, you know, that the municipal band will be funded, for instance, or...
Well, we're doing those anyway.
Okay.
They, even with the contract with Hutchinson Recreation Commission, we pay those directly.
So they won't be absorbing those costs?
No.
Okay.
No, that remains with the city, remains in the city budget. That's ours.
They'll just administer. Oh. Sounds like a pretty sweet deal.
So what do they do other than what you just mentioned? Tony? Please?
Sorry, Tony, I knew that was going to come.
Tony Finley, Executive Director of Hutch, Hutchinson Recreation Commission. Councilman Garza, so, other activities in the arts and humanities world? So when we assumed responsibility or entered into the contract with the city at the end of 2019, the funding, joint funding between yourselves and the county and Hutch Rec provided for a part-time programmer. Obviously, March of 2020, things got a little crazy. And, and so we spent a lot of time with the appointed council just trying to figure out a new direction for arts and humanities and, and really a more collaborative effort. That community was very siloed in, in what it was doing. And what we determined was the focus really needed to be, too, in encouraging public, public art, avenues for local residents that sought to be musicians to perform at Farmer's Market their Thursdays and pay accordingly. There, there was a, a practice of really not paying for performance. It was expected that these things should be for free. And so we, we restructured the funding to make sure that Farmer's Market their Thursday, all those artists that were doing special events were paid an appropriate industry rate for those performances. And, and as, as I, as I got established, the, the next phase was really the Foxtrot Media Studio, which the ribbon cutting is this Thursday, 4:00 PM. That's going to provide a low-cost entry point to media, to media arts, recording studio, those sorts of things. And so that work will continue. As Paul said, we've taken that funding and, and absorbed that. We've actually, that position is now full-time. So now we have a full-time programmer instead of just a part-time programmer. And we will continue to do all those events, third Thursdays, help with the Farmer's Market for those musicians, build up the, the Foxtrot Studio, and then, and then look for the next thing.
I understand that, and that's great. The only thing I worry about is that there won't be no change, we won't see no change. I don't want to where people come telling me, and I ask you later, how come we're not doing that? Well, you say, Councilor Garza, we just can't afford it, you know? That's what I don't want. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because we, we just can't afford to do that anymore.
Right.
Right.
Right. So I do get a lot, you know, what's, you know, why is the Rec Commission in the arts and culture world? Right, well, we're celebrating our 75th year this year of the Hutch Rec Commission. And when you look back at the beginnings of that, back in the, the late 1940s, Hutch Rec played a prominent role in establishing the orchestra and the community theater at the time. And so this has always been part of recreation. Other communities, when they look at their public art program and, and those kind of things, it is housed underneath the Parks and Recreation Department. And so it's something that I was, my education and, and all my professional experience have been a part of over the years. And it's very important, and I think the camp, the Rec Commission committing the budget, their budget to do this, shows that there's a commitment to, to that, so...
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add that as the community's quality of life organization, it makes sense. It's a good fit. And I expected to have more feedback on this item and, and didn't receive any. So I think that speaks volumes to the reputation you have for representing that portion of our community, so... Yeah. I, I would entertain a motion or further comments or questions on this item.
Motion to approve a resolution dissolving the Hutchinson Reno County Arts and Humanities Council and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion and a second on the floor, any comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Farmers Dickard Haller?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7, consider ARPA management and consulting services.
Angela Richard, Director of Finance. It was council's suggestion that we have some entity help us with our American Rescue Plan Act funds. Fifty percent of that you had agreed to use and vie out through grants to the community for housing, childcare, and economic development or small businesses. So the amount of that money equals $3,081,407. After discussing with the state, we found out that we would need to do a request for proposal. So that is what we did. We issued that on June 7. We held a pre-bid meeting on June 14, and then the submission deadline was June 28. The RFP included the services for consulting and communication support. This would include things like strategic planning on how to execute this program. It also included grant application and customer support. This would include advertising the application, communicating with our citizens, and ranking applications. There was also an element to this proposal of grant monitoring. There will be the need for, after we issue these grants, to monitor subrecipients, monitor the businesses that we award this money to. So this was optional and not included in the price. But we wanted to include this in that if we have a lot of subrecipients we have to monitor, we may need assistance. So it was an optional part of that. And then we requested their hourly not to exceed amount. We received four responses, and they were evaluated by Gary and myself, the purchasing agent Carmel White, the Human Relations Officer Dave Satello, and the Director of Public Information and Community Engagement Rebecca Kiesling. I thank them for the amount of time involved in ranking these applications and reading through and the follow-up questions we had with the entities. So the four responses we received were from iParametrics and the Hutchinson Community Foundation. Those were our top two. Both Management Consulting and Virtial Kraus &amp; Company both ranked below 70 points out of the available 100 points. And their, their requests involved a lot more city time than we thought that we could dedicate. So to compare iParametrics and the Hutch Community Foundation, both had pros and cons, but both were good quality applicants for this work. iParametrics is familiar with ARPA, FEMA, HUD, and other federal grants. And they can work to leverage those other grants. It tells what grants we could couple with ARPA in order to make the award mount larger. They would also plan to train local staff to walk through, citizens through the process. This was something the other two applicants did not address, was how they were going to reach citizens being remote. So they did, iParametrics did address this concern. City staff would have to provide the knowledge regarding our community and how to reach some of the underserved populations. With Hutch Community Foundation, they know our community. They're trusted in our community, and they already have identified partners that they could reach out to, stakeholders in our community that they could reach out to and work with. They also know how to reach our disadvantaged populations. Our concerns were that they're not as familiar with ARPA or other federal grants. So it could leave us vulnerable if, if neither one of us is familiar with all the ins and outs of federal grants. And then staffing might be a concern as well. If something were to hap with them, happen with one of their key staff, they would be able to distribute the work, but it, it, it might be a concern. So in the ranking, iParametrics ranked 89 out of, I'm sorry, that's supposed to be 100 points. That was their average. Their total cost was $125,000. The Hutch Community Foundation ranked 85 out of 100 points, and their total cost was $159,700. Our recommendation is to award it to iParametrics because of their higher ranking and the value that they would provide. So with that, we would be open to any questions you may have.
Can you go back and to the last slide, please? Okay, the, the bottom one under Hutch Community Foundation, the staffing issue, can you review that again, please?
So one of their staff projects that they would spend 80% of their time their first year on this project. So our concern was if something were to happen to that staff member, how would the project continue when we move forward? Whereas iParametrics, if you read through their proposal, they have lots of staff that they can leverage if something were to happen.
Where's iParametrics based out of?
Georgia.
Georgia.
Georgia, yes.
They do have staff in Kansas City. And local preference is not something we can consider for federal awards.
iParametrics has recently, in fact, I think they're currently working with Celine County, Vinnie County, and Seward County. So they do, they have worked in, in Kansas. They also work with some cities. I don't know of any in Kansas, but they, for example, Fayetteville, Arkansas, and, and several others. So they, they do work with a lot of city and county governments.
I like the fact that they are familiar with ARPA, FEMA, like the number one bulletin under, and their ability to couple grants together. I mean, I guess I like the Hutchinson Community Foundation and what they bring to the community, but with this particular thing, I think that having the ability to couple grants together and the knowledge of ARPA already is huge.
What I struggle with is, I mean, iParametrics is, if, if everything was equal, is cheaper. It's a cheaper option. The thing is, it's $125,000, it's going to go to Georgia. And $159,000 would be in our community, whether it's through wages or fees, it's still people that live here. So it's getting rotated back into our community in a way. But I don't, if, if, you can't consider a local preference on that.
And I get what you're saying there, but how many thousands of dollars could be more leveraged in the community through the ARPA funding coupled with other federal funding for the local businesses? We can't quantify that, but if they are able to do that, I think more local dollars would actually end up in the community because you're coupling grants together and bringing that into the community. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
It does. Were, was there any calls to these other counties that they're working with to see how they like working with them?
Yes, yes, we, we contacted the three counties in Kansas. And, and I will say that it was a difficult decision, the process for the, for the committee to go through because I think we've all worked with the Community Foundation. They're great people, they do good work. I've worked with them on some of the CARES Act funding and, and things like that. And, but it, you know, it was just one of those things that we felt kind of like what was indicated, that they do have a very strong understanding of ARPA, FEMA, and some of the other federal grants that perhaps could help to, we could use the ARPA money to help leverage some other funding opportunities.
And they're, they're doing the exact same work in these other counties?
Yes, sir. Yeah, working with ARPA. They have worked with some of the other counties, not just on, on ARPA, but other, other programs, too. They have worked with some of the other counties, not just on ARPA, but other programs too.
I might add that I have no doubt that iParametrics would be outstanding. I was blown away by their proposal, and especially the quality and number of staff members that would be dedicated to this particular project. That being said, my preference is still going to be the Community Foundation, simply because they were the organizing body behind the focus groups that, you know, were convened at no cost, and they just have such an intimate knowledge about what our community wants those funds to go toward. I don't wish to put more work on staff, which may be a result of working with an organization that's not as familiar with federal grants. But I have full faith that the Community Foundation can, yeah, implement these grant awards in a way that, you know, any outsider may not be able to. That's just my opinion. Again, both are strong proposals, but I would be in favor of using the Community Foundation.
I mean, we have one shot with these ARPA funds to make a real big difference, and I think we need a professional that can couple funds so that we can get better leverage and more funding. Or I feel if you go with somebody like the Hutchinson Community Foundation, we might not be able to leverage as much.
Well, I would like to, I'm curious what an example might be on this coupling. Angela, can you provide an example of how it might?
There were tons of examples in the proposal, but like for one example with us is that we could possibly use FEMA to pay for their contracts. I don't know the ins and outs of FEMA, so if I wanted to attempt that, I'm sure it would involve a lot of time. And I, there's also possibilities for like moderate income housing, since we're looking at housing, other HUD programs. Those are the ones in particular that I can remember.
If we move forward with iParametrics, I seriously doubt the Community Foundation's gonna say, "That's our information, we're not gonna share that with you."
Yeah, you know what? Yeah, I respect that.
I mean, back to what you were talking about, I do like the idea of, there's a lot more familiarity with the other grant, you know, federal grant programs out there and what can be used. And I'm a big fan of the Hutch Community Foundation. I do like the idea of if we were to go with HCF as the money being spent with a local organization, then it just ends up staying within the community. But in the big scheme of things, you know, iParametrics has set themselves up better for this type of program.
I think on the convening side, and one of our main goals was that this be as inclusive as possible, that, you know, the Community Foundation does have the upper hand in that respect. And I'm wondering, could they be a subrecipient to do some of the convening if we went with iParametrics?
Oh, if we could allocate some additional funding for like a cooperation?
Well, when you were, yeah, when you were going through the proposals, and they have an outreach, iParametrics has an outreach strategy. And I can't help but believe that the Community Foundation would be more adept at that particular piece. So, that's just throwing that out there.
We, maybe I could answer that a little bit. During the process, I want to say a couple of things, never wanted to answer your question, Mayor. We did talk with iParametrics because one of the things they do, one of the strategies they use is to reach out to, not only have people, boots on the ground, people that they employ to do the training and contacting and things like that, but they do reach out to other grants, or other organization, I should say, other organizations in the community to help them get the word out, making sure they're covering all populations. We thought they might be in a situation where they actually contract with maybe some of those groups to assist, but they don't. And I think it, I don't know this for a fact, I think it might be because of some of the federal guidelines with regard to having to go through a process probably similar to what we're doing here. So, that's why, you know, the people that work for them are their employees and people that they hire. So, but they would reach out, they did indicate they would reach out to the various groups and all that. Of course, they identify what's called qualified census tracts. Those are, you know, a lot of, there's some definition is basically people with some of the lower incomes, making sure that they're trying to hit all the populations in targeting those and documenting what kind of, what kind of work they've done in those particular areas to make sure that people have that opportunity. We did, you know, I do think, when we're going back to and talking about familiarity with, you know, some of the other grants, I do think that, in talking with Kerry, I do think they would, we could ask the foundation if that's the direction he decided to go, to help us do some of that more exploration on that. I know they would try to do it if, you know, I just, you know, they probably don't quite have the experience, but I know they would certainly help in that regard, but anyway. But I wanted to just clarify that they will reach out to other organizations if that's the decision you try to make.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do we wanna see if the representative for Hutch Community Foundation would like to speak on their willingness to work with iParametrics, or to what extent they may be involved?
Sure, I mean, if you wanna put Aubrey on the spot.
She's fine with being put on the spot, she has to deal with that all the time, I'm sure.
Do you have some comments?
Sure.
Hello, I'm Aubrey Abbott Patterson with the Hutchinson Community Foundation, I'm the CEO, and I was really proud to submit the proposal that we did. And I'm glad we scored the way we did and was considered with the kind comments that we received from staff and the conversations we had before, during, and after. It was just, it was a good process. I have to say that, you know, our value proposition that we bring to it is that we do know this community well. We are committed to the equitable distribution of the ARPA money. We do believe in transparency, we do wanna communicate well to our community. That's what we bring to this process. In looking at iParametrics' proposal, I was blown away by who they are, what they provide, their experience, their expertise, and what they know about ARPA. And I do think that the layering of funding is really important. We had talked about what we could provide there and who we know. Our idea was SCAD, they're really good at knowing how to layer programs and that we might be able to partner with them to do that. But iParametrics knows that, they can layer that funding and better than we can. We just don't have enough of that in-house to do it easily. And certainly, our community wants to bring as much resources as we can back to Reno County. And if another entity can do that, that's what we wanna lean toward. The fact that the city staff leaned toward the proposal that can provide compliance tells me that as they dug into it deeper, they knew that's what they needed. And I don't want to say that we can provide that at the level that iParametrics can. And if that's what the city staff needs, then I think that's, for me sitting up there, that's the way I would go. But the other positive I saw in the staff report was that city staff wants to dig into helping iParametrics to reach out to people, to get that community voice, to make sure we continue to prioritize the funding in childcare, housing, and workforce development. And that we continue to make sure everybody can come to the table and be part of the decision and apply for the funding. You know, I think about Rebecca Kiesling and David Satello and their parts and what they're doing in this community, maybe other city staff too, but if we can create a culture like that in the city where there's more resident engagement, more outreach, to me, that's a win. Not just creating more partners in this community who are doing more outreach. So, I think that's good too, and iParametrics is gonna need that. I want you to know that if you go with iParametrics, the Community Foundation still stands ready to ensure, on behalf of the Community Foundation, but also on behalf of that task force that did all this work to get the resident engagement, we stand ready to provide whatever we can to the process to continue to help people understand, help iParametrics understand our community's landscape, what the needs are, and what the people have said to us already. So, I think that that organization is well-prepared to serve our community well. I do hate that the money will leave our community. I always hate that. But they have a very impressive proposal, they're doing it well in other places in our state. I don't begrudge the idea that they would be the one that's chosen. And I think we could work well together.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Who's gonna be the person in charge to deal with iParametrics? I mean, if we have a complaint, who's gonna be that one person that we can not scream or yell at him, but just talk to him? Problem here. Go ahead, sir. But the reason I say that, when we use outside contractors sometimes, I mean, I've worked the city for a long time too. Sometimes they don't come, they don't, we can't get ahold of them. So, who would be the person with the city that we talk to, that you, do we talk to you?
Well, I think ultimately it'll be me, council member. I think that certainly Angela will have a lot of contact with them. And that's one of the things I wanted to ask, and I did ask the other counties that I contacted, because I know sometimes when you have a large firm, you can kind of get lost because they're working with. But they did say they were very responsive, you know, the counties. And some of these are small counties, such as Seward County and Finy County is some smaller. And they felt like they got good communication and good service. But I wanted to make sure for that particular reason, because if people are working with them and they can't get ahold of them, it's frustrating.
Yes.
And so, we wanna make sure that, and we'll certainly sit down with them at the beginning and outline some of our expectations, if this is the direction you decide to go.
Well, I know that I'll be watching how this goes. I think that I would be for backing staff. It sounds like they've worked hard to figure out which one we should go with. But I wonder in the future, maybe we can use them for some grant writing and some, some of those kind of services. And I've already, I've met with SCAD, there's a couple of folks there, they do a nice job too. But I feel like that's something that sometimes we miss as a city. Money that's out there, that if we knew how to do it, how to go after it, we would get it, and it would help us get things done in the city that we need to get done. So, that's where I'm at.
Is there a motion or further discussion on this item?
I would make the motion to award the RFP to iParametrics and authorize the mayor to sign any required documents.
Second, sorry, second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Like I said before, a hundred times before, we sit up here with a lot of decisions to make, and this is gonna make a decision for where the money goes, that we could help bring money to our own citizens here in Hutch. And I do appreciate her comments, your comments. At that point, with your comments, I'd vote yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Takearvolo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item seven C, consider ARPA allocation.
Okay, Angela Richard, Director of Finance. On April fifth, the city council had a work session regarding ARPA. The city was awarded six million one hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-six cents. At that meeting, city council informally agreed that fifty percent of that should be spent towards city needs and fifty percent should be spent on community projects. The fifty percent of that, ten percent, so five percent of the total, was decided to go to the Housing Commission or for housing needs. The fire department was awarded four hundred forty thousand at the March fifteenth meeting for their needs. And then, it was informally decided in budget work sessions that Woody Seate Freeway would use the remainder of the city's, sorry. And then, of the fifty percent for community projects, childcare would be awarded thirty percent, economic development or small business would be awarded ten percent, and then, housing ten percent. I have two options here, depending on which way you awarded iParametrics. So, that would be option one. If you agree with those allocations, we recommend making a motion to approve option one. It is also open for discussion if we had misinterpreted how you wanted those allocations. Are there any questions? And if iParametrics does apply for FEMA and we are able to pay their fees out of FEMA, that would free up more money as well, so that may be an option in the future.
Okay, any question on the allocations we discussed a few months ago in the study session? Okay, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve option one for consulting, for the allocation of the ARPA money based on picking iParametrics and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Takearvolo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight, report of city officials.
Okay, let's start with you, Steve.
No, Grace, yeah. Well, I really don't have none, it's just that being a commissioner's fun, I mean, talking to everybody, making decisions. But at this time, I have none, thank you.
Okay, great, what about you, Greg?
Yeah.
I've had a lot of people interested in the bike island at Seventeenth and Washington. That and chickens seem to be a hot topic. I wanna remind the folks about the island, with that island, we got two blocks north of that, completely repaved, new water and sewer, I believe, underneath that road. Nope? Okay, well, we did get two blocks really that were almost impassable in a car. It was so rough. Fixed by getting that grant for a bicycle island. And I believe the city spent eighty grand out of a four hundred thousand dollar project. So, if we can look beyond this island that most people don't like, I think there's gonna be some signage put on it, maybe it'll look a little nicer eventually.
Can we just demolish it?
I guess we can take it out in a few years, but, I mean, it'll be fine.
I wanted it adjusted out of the plan originally when the discussion's back in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Nobody wanted to have that discussion with me. And I guess I'm just gonna lean back to what I said before, is it necessary for the project?
Well, I think that's how we got the grant.
Yeah, it goes back to the conversation about leveraging others' dollars to come into our community.
I mean, I choose to look at the positive. I don't ride a bike.
But I think we could have still made it a bike boulevard without the island.
Yeah, we certainly could have. If I did ride a bike, I probably wouldn't use Washington, probably ever. But that's fine, there's people smarter than me that make those decisions. And again, we leveraged money to get two city streets that were terrible fixed. So, if we could just, you know, that's my stand on the thing. That's what I talk to people about when they call and wanna know what that thing is in the middle of seventeen. So, anyway, I believe that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. What about you, Angela?
Well, there's this bike island at Seventeenth and Washington. I've heard quite a bit about, and a lot of the similar discussions, it's been unpopular with quite a few people. One thing I do get in, I kind of lead into another discussion, and that's in regards to trying to pay attention to what's going on in local politics. It can show you that there may be a small contingent that is organized, that makes a good showing, that wants something done, and it may not be representative of the entire city as a whole, because they're involved. And so, I try to use it as an example to encourage people to pay attention to what's going on in local politics, as unfun as that might be sometimes. The other question I had was in regards to chickens, which I've had a lot of feedback on that, actually, that people want. on that, actually, that people want to see that changed, right? I don't know where we're at at planning and zoning on that, and I'd be curious if there's discussions in regards to fencing and controlling what requirements it would be for any changes to the amount of chickens you can have.
Council member, I believe that it was discussed at the recent planning and zoning meeting. It was basically at this point introduced. They are doing more research and I think will continue that conversation once they get more information.
Yeah, I know that the ordinance, that the part that will not be changed is the requirements for the having to be fenced, that can't be free, they can't free range. There's, in the ordinance currently, we already have, there's already those provisions. Those are not what I'm asking to be changed. If it isn't kept tidier cleanly, has to be 10 feet away from any of the exterior property lines. Like, there's actually a lot that are in the ordinance already that would not be changed. That kind of protects for that cleanliness. I'm only asking the, a lot of counties across the United States and in Kansas have 6 to 12, and we have 3 to 10. So that's all I'm asking.
Majority of the feedback I've gotten has been positive on making changes. There's been a few concerns in regards to enforcement. Some people that are already neighbors with people that have chickens, that get chickens in their yard, and they don't like that. And that's, but that's a question later on, is how that gets enforced. I'm sure it'd be through complaint basis. We're not going to have someone driving around chicken inflicting, just looking for violations. But we would need to, I think if we're going to move forward with changes, we need to be clear on how it would be enforced. Just reiterate, at least. But I'd be curious to see how this plays out.
I've had a lot of positive feedback of people wanting, there's a lot of people that are doing the, what's called urban homesteading, you know, with the gardens and the chickens and having that in an urban culture, which is really important, I think, going forward with people learning how to grow and produce food for themselves. So I think it's a really good thing. I think it's something that we should, I'm the one that proposed it, so of course, you know. But I think it's a good thing to have, to have that urban ability within the cities to be able to do that, and it would be conformative. So I'm in support of that. Yes, I've been hearing about the island. I, like I said earlier, I mean, it could be, it's another situation where it's going to be like those Fruit Loop rings up at the sports arena. Do we just stay with it and continue to hear the fact that we wasted money and it looks horrible? Or do we maybe put something else there, like a broader sidewalk with a light? Or, I'm being serious. Do we just stick with the, maybe a failed concept, like a design? Or do we realize our mistake and change it? That's what I'm asking.
I don't know if it's a failed design just yet. I mean, time will tell. But it does, I mean, it's, to me...
Someone's going to hit it.
Well, I mean, you could hit any curb, too, if you're not paying attention.
It's like the cutout curves on Main Street, you know?
But I'm not a fan of spending money, spending more money to take it back out just yet, either.
Sometimes you have to realize your mistakes, though.
Right. And for us, I think, because we weren't really involved in approving this as much. I mean, this has been going on for years.
Yeah, it was approved, I think, like 2018, and then the budgeting was approved in 2020, and the plan was approved in 2021. I went all the way back to look at this. But I, which I probably would have thought a little bit harder on wanting the adjustment to that design, because I really did feel it was very important for us to leverage those funds to get the road done. That was the main reason why.
Well, that's the whole problem, Sarah. Do we go back on our promise to the state? And, you know, they come around, they're like, where's that island? And it's gone. And everything's back like it was. I don't think that's fair either.
Well, I think you could, I mean, can you still make it a bike boulevard to be within the parameters of the grant and not have that there? Because maybe you can write an amendment for safety concerns because it sends the road too much. Or, I mean, unless you put up reflectors, how are they going to see it?
Well, I hope it's designed correctly. And if you want to speak about it, fine. You know, I've heard that the fire trucks can't get through there. I've heard all these things, and I'm not sure that's the case, because surely it would not have been designed.
No, they have the no parking signs up there now, so as long as nobody parks there, they can get through.
So, yes, the safety thing, you were talking about the safety of the vehicles. A, the signs aren't up yet. So there's still a lot of signs that are going inside of that median that are highly reflective, the vehicles will see. The other safety factor we're overlooking is that it's the, the reason it's in is for the safety of the bicyclist. So because of the traffic volume, it's the only one that has the traffic volume to warrant needing a safe place for a bicyclist to travel into. It allows them to look one direction, cross, get into a protected median, look the other direction. It's a bigger advantage for like children or elderly that have a harder time taking off and speeding up rapidly. I actually have an email. Bicycle boulevards are for low-stress cycling, so younger people and inexperienced cyclists can ride on them. Major streets like 17th Avenue pose major barriers to those types of cyclists. The island on 17th Avenue is designed to give cyclists and pedestrians a two-stage crossing so they can watch for traffic in one direction, cross that side when it's clear, and then look at traffic from the other direction and cross when that side's clear. These types of islands have also been shown to dramatically increase safety for cyclists and pedestrians and also increase the yielding rates by drivers. Without the islands, the cyclists aren't very experienced, would have a hard time using the bicycle boulevard to access the downtown. On top of that, when it was done, there was a lot of different groups and meetings that were taking place. There's different forms from like the vitality team and different groups that did show up to all the different public meetings, that you have a whole bunch of signatures that were, you know, in support of said island or in the different traffic circles that go within it. So that's, I don't know. Is there any, do you have any questions about that?
No, I would just say that that's a really important point to bring up, that there are different factions in our communities, and we may be hearing from one, and it's not fair to make a decision unilaterally without input from those who really pushed to get this done for years and years. So happy to explore it later, once all stakeholders have the opportunity to weigh in. What else you got, John?
Oh, I was done, yeah.
Okay, you're done. Okay. Sarah's done, okay. Now, I know we have several executive sessions, so what do you have, city manager, before we pass it along?
Okay. Gary Meeger, interim city manager. The only thing I was going to mention, I did send you all some information with regard to the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference. And if you'll take a look at that and let us know if you would like to attend, I think it's really a great opportunity if you've not been to the League's conference before. It starts usually on a Saturday afternoon and then goes through until Monday, usually about noon time, it's over. So I know everybody's got a pretty busy schedule. It's October 8th through the 10th. I know everybody's got a pretty big, busy schedule, but if you do have the opportunity to attend, I would encourage you to do so.
Okay.
I got a question real quick, it's on my mind real quick about these chickens, and I'm too scared to ask it, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Is there any roosters that day chickens have to have? Are we going to have more roosters? The crocodiles and wake people up in the night?
Roosters are not permitted within the city limits.
Okay. So we don't have roosters in this thing, right? Okay.
Paul, what do you estimate we'll need for this first executive session? How much time? Forty-five minutes for the first one?
Forty-five minutes?
One more quick question, Gary. I know we have the list for the new city manager search to engage some particular stakeholders. Is city staff going to contact them?
Yes, sir. They're in the process. I've asked Rebecca and Dave to assist with that. We do have all those groups filled, and so they are in the process of making contacts. If we do find that someone is not going to be able to make it, we'll get back and look at it.
Okay. Because I've been asked that, and that's the answer I've been giving. I was confirming that that was the correct answer.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Okay, can I have a motion on 9A to recess until 11:00 AM?
I would move to recess until 11:00 AM on option 9A, line item 9A.
I'll second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Taker-Ballot?
Yes.
Careful, we got to the first one.
Motion would be fifty.
It's going to be eleven fifteen.
Okay, is there a motion on nine B?
I move to recess in the executive session until eleven fifteen for item nine B.
I second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Passed.
Yes.
Bagwell?
Richardson?
Yes.
Iris, state of the ball.
Yes. Which one? This one?
No, this one.
Oh, it's my...
It's on me.
It's the agenda, yeah.
Motion would be fifty.
It's going to be eleven fifteen.
Okay, is there a motion on nine B?
I move to recess in the executive session until eleven fifteen for item nine B.
I second that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Bagwell? Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Dick, Torvaldo.
Yes. Which one? This one?
No, this one.
Oh, it's my...
It's on me.
It's the agenda, yeah.
...
...
I'd move to adjourn.
Come on, Gray. You want to stay here all day? What, are you retired or something?
Is there a second? On the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Or agree to adjourn?
(laughing)
All right.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
No, second.
Yes. Bagwell? Richardson?
Yes.
Iris Dave Carnvalho.
Yes.
We're done, right?
And I'll talk to you in the microphone. We'll probably see you soon.